Delighted to have you out for our public hearing here in Heber. Let me introduce the members of the commission that we have with us today. On my far right, your left, we have Commissioner Jeff Baker, then Commissioner Rob Bishop, Commissioner Bill Thorne, and I'm Rex Faeser, I'm the Chair of the Commission. We have Commissioner Lyle Hilliard and Commissioner Karen Hale. And not with us today is Commissioner Christine Durham, who's had some work commitments, is that highlights that we're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve, but this is a secondary role for many of us. And we appreciate, I appreciate my colleagues taking time out of their schedules to join me at the public hearing. We're grateful to have all of you, we're grateful to have some elected officials with us. We have Glenn Wright from Summit County with us, we're glad to have you with us Glenn, and then we have Park City Mayor Andy Beerman with us as well. We appreciate you joining us here as well. We also do want to note, for those of you interested in the redistricting process and advocacy around redistricting, we have Katie Wright from Better Boundaries who is here. And just to be clear, Better Boundaries was the organization that helped spearhead the creation of the Independent Redistricting Commission, but we are not related other than it was their hard work that laid the groundwork for the commission. We wanted to start by telling you all a little bit about the redistricting process and about how the commission works. As I mentioned, we were formed after the ballot initiative in 2018, and then in 2020, there were some compromises made with the legislature in what resulted in the ultimate creation of the Independent Redistricting Commission with the seven members. Three of the members were appointed by Republicans, Republican leadership in the legislature, and three by the Democratic leadership in the legislature. Of those three, on each side, one of them is an independent commissioner, meaning that they don't have a party affiliation. That's Commissioner Baker and Commissioner Thorne. The other commissioners have a known party affiliation, if you will, and then I was appointed by the governor. So we've been meeting since early spring. Normally, in a normal year, the census data would have come out in about April, and we would have been able to start drawing maps shortly after that. Now, we spent the time between when we were appointed and the middle of August when we received the census data, getting up to speed so we understand redistricting law, so we understand kind of how the process works, how we're going to work together as a commission. And we've made a number of decisions. One of those is we're making very strong efforts to try and be as transparent as we can. And so, just so that you're aware, our meeting today is being broadcast live on YouTube. And that's this lovely little owl, you know, here at the front. That's also the only microphone that we have in the room. And so when we take public comments, we'll ask you to speak loudly to make sure that the microphone can pick it up. And so if you, if when we get to that point, if you want to come up here so you can address the commission and be relatively close and not feel like your back is completely to the audience, you're welcome to do so. So the fundamental criteria that we have to work with is the requirement to have equal populations in the districts. And we're charged with drawing districts for congressional boundaries, the state senate, the state house, and the state school board. Each one of those will have a different size for their districts. For example, congressional boundaries, we have to have a district composed of 817,904 people. And so what, some of you have looked at the maps, and those are some of our early drafts. Those are not the final proposed maps by any stretch of the imagination. But what we hope is that, one, by us starting to draw maps, we get to become much more familiar with the state. But we also give people the opportunity to see things that they like, and tell us, hey, we really like that, or, boy, that's not going to work, and here's why, so that we can get some feedback from you. The state senate districts will comprise about 112,800 people. State house districts are 43,622. And the state school board is just over 218,000. Now, the smallest of those is the state house district, and that still requires about 43,622 people. We can have a little bit of deviation across the districts, but it has to be relatively modest. The law expects us to, is as much as possible to have equal populations across our districts. But we also want to be recognized that even with those small house districts, that individual counties will not always have sufficient population in order to make up a house district on their own. And so, for example, here in Wasatch County, there were less than 43,000 population. So the question is, who will we bring together with Wasatch County to make a district? The same question for Summit County. Who will we bring together with Summit County to make a district? And we want to, if we're going to have to combine jurisdictions, we want to know where, from the public's perspective, does it make sense for us to carve outlines? If we're going to split communities, where does it make sense to do that? And where does it not make sense to do that? And so that requires that we get that public input, and that's part of the process that we're going through. Now, this is our second public hearing. We held a public hearing yesterday down in Monticello. We'll have about another dozen public hearings over the next six weeks as we continue to go around the state to try and get feedback from folks. But don't assume that this is the only opportunity you have to provide us feedback. We will be posting all of the maps that we're drawing on our website. And as we get to more final maps, we'll start, all the maps will still be available, but we will start identifying those that are in the most serious rounds of discussion. And when we get to that point as well, we want to make sure we're getting feedback from people so that, again, we can be drawing maps that represent the people of Utah. There are a number of other criteria that we have to pay attention to. For example, we have to have contiguous districts. So we can't say, so let's say for a moment that the folks in Wasatch County didn't want to be in a county with, say, Utah County. We can't leap over Utah County and say, well, we'll put Wasatch and Tooele together. They have to be connected. And so, again, we can't leapfrog over Summit County and pick up, say, Rich County or Morgan County to make up the population. We have to be contiguous. And so as we do that, we need feedback from people to help us know what makes most sense. Does it make most sense from here in Wasatch County for us to go west, to go east, to go north, to go south? What makes most sense? So we need that feedback. We also are trying to have our districts be reasonably compact. Now, the challenge is, in a state like Utah, where we have about 80% of the population along the Wasatch Front, it's relatively easy in Utah Valley and Salt Lake Valley, and even in Davis County, to have relatively compact districts. It becomes more challenging the further out we get where our population is much more sparsely divided across the state. And so when we do those divisions, we're still trying to make it as compact as we can. It's just that not every district will have the same compact nature. But all of our districts' compactness is one of the goals that we're after. We're also trying to pay attention to, say, mountain ranges and rivers, to use those as natural dividers, highways, natural dividers where we can. Now, it's not always possible. But again, we recognize that if we go across the mountains, it's a little more difficult for a representative to stay connected on both sides of the mountain. But there may be times where that is the best way for us to maintain contiguity or something of that nature. We are looking at the cores of prior districts as well, but one of the challenges with the cores of prior districts is that we've had some significant population shifts. You, those of you here in Wasatch County who have watched that, as you've seen, I think the number was, it was about 11,000, it's now about 16,000 people here in Heber. That means that the population ends up having to shift around the state. So we can't have the identical boundaries that we had before because we now have a lot more people living in the south part of Salt Lake County, a lot more people in the northern part of Utah County. We have a lot more people down in Washington County. And so that causes us to have to shift the boundaries. And it means that they won't look exactly like they looked the last time around. We are also trying to pay attention to municipal and county boundaries. Where we can, we want to keep counties and municipalities whole. But again, that will not always be possible in every circumstance. But where we can, we want to do that. And if we have to split a community, we want your input so that we split it in a way that makes sense to you as a community. The last thing that I want to note is that we have been charged with not favoring or disfavoring a political party, a political candidate, or a political incumbent. And so to do that, we have chosen to not look at any political data in our map drawing. And so we don't know where the Republicans are living, we don't know where the Democrats are living, we don't know where the incumbents are living. And we're excluding that from our analysis so that we're explicitly not trying to favor or disfavor a candidate. We would like to have a couple of comments from our elected officials that we have here. And I know we have, again, Mayor Beerman, and so we'll start with you. We asked for a couple of comments.
Well, thank you. And I really want to start out with a heart, a heartfelt thank you to all of you as commissioners. At Monticello yesterday, here today, can't imagine where you're going tomorrow, but I think you're going to have a busy fall.
Home. Home is net.
Well, thank you for taking this on. I think this is important to us all, and it's certainly important to the state to get it right. And speaking on getting it right, I think if you do your absolute best and you get it right, no one's going to be happy with it, which probably means you got it right. So you're in a difficult position, and I feel like I need what you have to do. I do urge you to keep it, I like your criteria, communities, compactness, geography, and keeping the politics out of it. I think for it to work, that is definitely going to have to happen. And I know a number of you have been appointed because of your political affiliations, but if I don't, you can truly keep that to the side because I think that's going to be the key to success. From Park City's standpoint, it's important to us to be kept together as a community. And there are some actual divisions, which I think we have Commissioner Wright here, he can talk about Summit County on the whole. But I just want to talk about the greater Park City area. And I would define that essentially from Summit Park and Jeremy on I-80 in until you hit Quinnes Junction on this side, before you start coming over the hill towards Wasatch County. And then I would say going out towards the east side, Hideout and Two Way, those developments would consider themselves part of the greater Park City area. And I think it makes a lot of sense in that, for that region, we are tourism and lifestyle-based. We don't have a lot of manufacturing. We no longer have a very heavy rural economy. Most of it is about quality of life, recreation. Both our visitors and our residents are there to bike, to golf, to ski, to participate in the arts, to have a nice setting to raise their children. And I think that they're very similar in their needs. Our politics are very diverse, but our needs as a community, I think, revolve around that. So I hope, under most of these decisions, I've only had a brief chance to look at the map, but we would love to see that kept together. Currently, we get split into two or three different segments, despite the fact we are very much a tight-knit community that all feel like we're neighbors there. I will just generally comment, I think, as we look at the maps, there are arguments in both directions. But I, knowing that the greater Park City area is going to have to be a part of one side or the other, we have very close connections with the Wasatch Front. Many, many of our residents work in Salt Lake or along the Wasatch Front, whether it's at the university, it's at the airport, and some of the tech industries that commute every day. So our, and likewise, a significant amount of our workforce, we have 15,000 people a day commute to Park City to work. And I think 40 or 50% of those come from the Wasatch Front. So there's a strong argument there that we have connection with the Wasatch Front. On the flip side, if you look at the Wasatch back and the Heber Valley over here midway, many of our residents, for affordability reasons, have moved down here and commute, but still have close ties to the community. And I think as the Heber Valley adds their own resort here, the Mayflower Resort, and expands around the Jordelle, I think our lifestyle and tourism part of the economy becomes more and more interrelated. So I would hope in either scenario, we would look sort of the east and the west there as opposed to north and south, because I think those are more natural connections. And in our case, I would throw geography out the window because if you use rich lines or rivers as a limitation, we're going to be carved up quite a bit. So with that, I'm mostly here to listen and learn. And I just got a quick preview, but again, thanks for the work you're doing. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to help.
Thank you very much. Glenn?
Thank you, Commissioner. You got a big job. I have some experience in this redistricting game because 10 years ago, I was part of the predecessor, Better Boundaries. We did not do very well, had very much funding. We managed to get, collect about 50,000 signatures strictly with volunteers. I don't think we raised more than about $20,000 in the tariff. So I guess on a signature per dollar argument, we did pretty well. But we did not get in the ballot. But as a result of that, I spoke to the legislative committees several times for redistricting the last time around. And this is a much better effort, people, if the legislature will listen to you. Because the feedback I got from the legislative leaders last time was, yeah, okay, we're listening to you, but we're going to do our own thing. And the last effort was primarily, almost exclusively, an effort in incumbent preservation. And that's why we got a lot of really strange redistrictings in rural Utah, primarily in Summit County. But let me talk about what I think the communities of interest are and how we can draw some compact districts that really will bring in communities of interest. Within Summit County, we think there are essentially two communities of interest. And this is where I differ from where I was 10 years ago. 10 years ago, I would have said, one house district, one state house district in Summit County. Summit County's had a, within about a few hundred votes, population of one house district for three redistricting cycles. But after some time on county government and interacting with people around it, it's probably a little bit more closely. We really have two communities of interest in Summit County. Western Summit County, which I would define as primarily the area around the Park City School District, and we have established boundaries for that. And Eastern Summit County, which are north and south Summit districts. Neither of those have enough population for a house district. But they're core communities because their interests are based on really historical migration trends, cultural and economic issues that are common to those areas. About, they're going to need additions to form either House, Senate, or be lumped into a congressional district. So let me talk about what I think would be a reasonable state house districts for these areas. Western Summit County would have approximately three quarters of the population needed for a state house district. So to get some additions for that population, as Mayor Beerman mentioned, the area on Route 248 in Park City and Canis really more heavily identifies with Park City than it does with other parts of the state. And then, you know, taking, picking up some population from the Salt Lake County East bench. Eastern Summit County would really align culturally and economically very well with Wasatch County. And Eastern Summit County and Wasatch County would have, I think, about 1,000 more residents, in my rough calculations, than they need for a house district. So they'd have to lose some population. Some of that would come from that Route 248 area along Wasatch County. And so we have enough detailed information on where those populations are. I don't know exactly how that district, what I put. 95% of that district would come from that area. And both those districts have populations that are really very close economic and cultural alignment. As far as state senate districts, my view is that Summit and Wasatch County together should form a core of a state senate district. Our counties have joined at the hip in economic terms and have recently had discussions on joint transportation issues. Our two counties are significantly different from other areas that we've been aligned with in the state senate. The unit of basin is oil and gas. Some of Wasatch County are mountain recreation and are concerned for snowpack, forests, health, and the water supply of most of the Wasatch Front. These two counties would have approximately 70% of the new population for a state senate district. And I would pick up additional populations with similar characteristics. Those would be the areas around the ski areas in Cotton Brook Canyons and in Morgan Weaver County. Those communities have inherent needs to preserve snowpack, preserve the forest, and preserve our watersheds, and be the guardians of the watershed of the entire Wasatch Front. My congressional standpoint, a much bigger issue, I'd just say that Summit County is much more aligned with Salt Lake City and northern Salt Lake County. I think the majority of our residents would prefer to be in a congressional district of that nation. I did see a few of those on your examples. I looked at, just a couple hours ago, and I held this state senate and house districts. Most of those, unfortunately, are based upon old districts that have really inherent laws that were built on more incumbent protection than communities of interest. So those would be my comments.
Perfect, thank you very much. I want to add a couple of things as we think about all of this. One, the software that's available, that you can see afterwards, again, it has all of the up-to-date census data. So you can see down to what they call the block level. So that's the smallest aggregation that the Census Bureau puts out data for. Now, blocks can literally be the size of a city block, or it could be a couple of dozen blocks. Or in the wilderness areas, it could be hundreds of acres. And the population of those blocks in some areas, like in the wilderness, is zero. And in other areas, it may have 900 people in a block. And so it's not as if the blocks are all divided evenly. And so that's one of the challenges, given that that's the smallest geography that we have. When we start diving down into that, we're constrained by the shapes of those blocks and the population in those blocks.
I'd just add this too. I haven't counted them, but I'm told there are 77,000 blocks in Utah.
Yeah, yeah, just in Utah. And so, you know, we've got a lot of blocks to work with, but we also have a challenge of making sure that we put those together in a way that the puzzle makes sense. The other thing that I wanted, two other things that I want to note. One, as we ask you for public comment, know that it's part of the public record, that it will be shared with the legislature as we move forward on this process. But it's also, we want to hear your voices. And if you have something that comes to your mind that you don't get a chance to say today, feel free to submit it through our website. We've also got a comments email address. It's UIRCcomments@utah.gov. But there's also easy ways to communicate with us on the website. And again, as you interact with our staff, they can show you where those are on the website. The last thing that I want to mention is a process issue. Our process will be taking public comment through about the 22nd or so of October. And so we're hoping that we'll have maps by around the 1st of October that we've already, that we've started to gel on. And that's when that public comment's going to become even more critical. We will finalize our maps and submit them to the legislature on November 1st. The legislature has the ultimate decision to make on which maps that they will approve. That said, it's important that you share your voice, not just with us, and we will do our best to amplify that voice together with the rest of the citizens. But there is also a Legislative Redistricting Committee. They'll be having a public hearing in Park City, for example. And we would encourage you to let your voice be heard there as well. We will tell your story, but the more you tell your story as well, that helps in this process. So is there anything else that members of the commission would like to state at this point?
I'd just say that as you get on that website, you're going to find some frustrations dealing with the software. Don't give up. We, our staff are young people who are computer savvy. And you can call them, and they can help you walk through the problem. Or they can take your oral comments, draw a circle around it, and say, this is from so-and-so. So your voice needs to be heard. Don't let the technology interfere with your ability to be spoken. But as Rex said, all of those numbers are there. You can draw your own maps, you can see where the connections are and where they're hard to make. But if you can tell us what makes sense for your community, it saves us a step from having to try and guess. Because if we don't live in your community, it's what, a less than a 50% chance that we're going to, we're going to do what you would like. So look at those, let us know. You change your mind in a couple of weeks, let us know that. We're charged with delivering 12 maps, three of each kind. So the three maps we deliver may be very different from each other for the congressional district or for the house seats. Let us know which ones you prefer. And again, that's part of the record we'll give to the legislature with our written report and our maps on November 1st.
Thank you. We'd like to turn a little bit of time over to Bo Baelis to talk about the way people have the opportunity to engage with us.
So a lot of what we have has already been said, so thank you. Commissioners know what they're talking about. But just to reiterate, we have several ways you can get us comments, and we will take any way that you can find. So on our website, we have our email, you can just email us. We have this software to draw community of interest. So if you're not interested in mapping the whole state, you can basically just draw a circle around where you want us to keep togethers. I would say the easiest way to explain it. So when it comes to these conversations, that can be really big for us. That, these are things that we can add to our maps. We're going to be having comments open as the commissioners are mapping. And so as much as you can, we want to hear. Today, we also have, I think most of us ended up with these papers, and it's not ideal. I know we don't have all of Summit County in here. But if you draw a circle around, you know, what you would see as the greater Park City area or, you know, things like that on these different map types, then we will happily, you know, go get home and scan them starting on Tuesday. That's what, you know, that's what they have a staff for. So same thing over here, you can write us any comments if you don't want to email us later or anything. And then, as Commissioner Thorntons said, we're also, we're happy to help. If you do want to district the whole state, we have the software. So you just saw with all those different colored lines and things, it can look a little overwhelming. We have some video tutorials, but we also are constantly checking our email. You come across a small problem or a large problem, we're more than happy to walk you through it. But that's really, like I said, everything's on our website, but everything's also on paper here today. We'll be streaming all of our meetings. So if you, you know, tuned into another YouTube meeting and want to tell us something, then that's great. But as Commissioner Thorntons said also, we only know so much of the state, even with very qualified commissioners that have been around for a while. And we can't know every city, every detail. We need to know, if it does come down to splitting a county or splitting a city, what makes the most sense, what keeps the most people together, what keeps, you know, communities of interest together. So, you know, please tell us as much as you want. We'll hang out after, the staff will. So you can tell us anything, you can tell the commissioners anything over here, but please just tell us as much as you can.
And all the meetings and all the mapping sessions are streamed on YouTube. So it's transparent, so you can see what we're doing. You can hear us as we're saying, as we're talking to each other. Maybe we should draw the line here, or include this neighborhood here. You can hear why we're saying those things. And if you think we've missed something, email us, call the staff. We want your input, because as the chairman said, these are not final. These are our drafts, and we're learning as we go. And we want your input. And the woman over here had a question, I think, for you both.
Is the circle drawing just on a hard topic or can you circle draw on line?
You can circle draw online if you click participate. And then the, Joey's going to try and pull up, but if you click on participate, this first little video we have shows you how to do it. And then if you click on map your community, it'll pull up the tool and you basically, you just click a shape around what you want to stay together. So okay, you don't have to do the whole state. It takes thirty seconds. We want like your name, your email, your zip code, so we know you're not a robot. And then whatever shape you want to draw us and. And yet, in fact, I would say online is preferred. We will scan things, but the less things we have to scan, the better for us. But yeah, so online as well.
Yeah, and once we have it online, one of the things that we're able to do is we're able to essentially merge all of those together to give us kind of overlay pictures of where people see commonalities of their communities. And so we look forward to that as well.
I would just add two things. For the last two weeks, Judge Thoron and I have spent almost every day, probably eight to ten hours doing maps. And so we know what we're talking about here, how hard it is. But there's two things that I think I've found that become very difficult. Number one is the population count has to be on. In other words, if we say eight hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and four people, we can only verify that by maybe eight hundred one other way. So when I see somebody submit a map and the map has eight hundred and thirty thousand in an area, it's illegal. We can't do it. So that becomes very difficult. And I think, I've not been on a reappraisal committee before, but as I've looked what they've done, I think the complaint is, well, they went this street or that. It's driven by population numbers. We've got to have the population numbers. I'll give you a good example. Wasatch County is what, about twenty-five thousand? I'm just guessing at that figure. What? Okay, thirty, doesn't matter. Because you've got to get forty-two thousand something to do it. So if we say, okay, we'll take Wasatch County and hold it cold, where do we get the other twelve thousand? Do we go to Park City area and Summit County and bring them there? And if we do, then what happens to Summit County? That's the other problem, is this is a jigsaw puzzle that has to fit together. And so if we say, no, 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 we won't touch Park City, let's go into, let's go into Carbon County. Well, maybe we're touched by mountains, but there's no way you really go. Maybe we go in the basin. Well, the basin has a problem, that they don't have enough to get all these in together. So we have to look at how we balance them all together. Because if we do a map and say, well, here's Wasatch County, we'll leave them there, thirty thousand. Here's Summit County, totally. Well, they don't want to be together in the same one, so we'll take one and put one in the other. There's not large enough. We're getting a lot of pressure from Salt Lake County saying, we want to be whole. We want to be, and they can't be whole because they're one point one million. So there's got to be some division of Salt Lake County. So do we cut up east and west, north and south, but part in Utah County, part in Davis County? So I don't think there's going to be a lot of people in Salt Lake County to move up into Summit County like you're talking about. I don't know, we don't know yet as we look at it. So the two big issues get to be, number one, the numbers. And we can't play around with that and we can't change that. And number two, having a puzzle fit together at the end fits. So if we were to say, okay, Summit County, we're going to take you out and make you one district, even though you're two different areas, but population wise, you're about right. Then what do we do with Morgan and Rich County? Rich County and Morgan County have been in this because if we put them in Cache County, then Cache County pushes over to Box Elder and then they have to go to Twella or Ogden. And so you get this.
Cascading effect.
Yeah, cascading effect.
Squeezing the balloon.
We'll have a solution. It's like, even though it may be perfect, nobody is going to like it. But the federal United States Supreme Court decision on one man for one vote makes this number thing crucial to us. And I've seen states that have done them and come within five percent have been struck down by the courts because they violate the one man, one vote rule. So I just tell you, as you get into, as you look at it, think in your mind, okay, this fits just great for Summit County, but I don't like the east and the west together. I got to divide them some way. So where do I do it the east, where do I do it the west? The west, do I go into Summit, to Wasatch County? Or do I go into Morgan? How do I, you know, that's, that's a great puzzle you're going to help us solve.
First of all, thank you very much for taking on the job. Thank you so much for taking on the task you have. Thank you so much for coming to our community and thank you for wearing masks to inspect our health. I have a couple of degrees in engineering. One of the things that I had to suffer through learning was multi variant linear optimization. So for your computer friends over here, I guess what I'm hearing here is a task that's almost impossible for a group of humans to sit down and resolve mathematically if nothing else. I'm not quite sure yet how much of this you're doing on the computer. And if not almost a hundred percent, have you considered it?
Actually, all the mapping we do is with computers, a hundred percent.
But we have looked at some artificial, yeah, we've looked at artificial intelligence and algorithms to draw. And one of the challenges that we have is, and we will evaluate our maps using those strategies. Is they can draw literally millions of maps. But what we found, when we spoke with several experts early on in this process, they suggested that that human decision-making that happens at the margins ends up becoming very valuable. And that's, that's where our decision-making needs your input is at those margins.
At the margin.
Yeah.
And that, and I will say, in my opinion, that part of it makes sense.
Yeah.
Trying to sit down and do the whole thing by hand.
Yeah, it is a time-consuming task.
Yeah, thank you.
There's another comment.
What is your maximum deviation from the desired number?
So it varies by type of district. So for example, with the congressional district, it's, and I should say that we're trying to match the deviation levels that the legislature is targeting. In part because we don't want that to be a red herring that they can use to throw out our maps. And so their target deviation is point two percent on the congressional maps. And so that ends up being about eight hundred and seventeen people total. So, which ends up being a very narrow margin. For the senate, house and school board, our targets are much wider. It's ten percent, which is essentially five percent below or five percent above. And so the margins on the house and senate and school board seats is much wider than the congressional. And some of that's also driven by court decisions where the courts have mandated much more closely aligning congressional districts to the equal population that Commissioner Hilliard referred to.
And that's the very outside limits. When you meet those limits, you're not guaranteed to survive a court challenge. So one of the tasks we're trying to do is keep that number as small as possible. Commissioner Bishop reminds us that last time they had one person difference in the congressional districts. So if we keep the numbers small in the difference, it's one less reason that our suggested maps to legislature get tossed out. If we use the full range, we may invite them to say thank you and pass off.
So, but at the same time, we have a whole additional set of criteria that we're trying to balance with that as well. And so if it means that, you know, we have, you know, two people versus fifty people, fifty people, if we can make a coherent argument why we want to be at fifty versus two, but we have to make that argument. And that will be part of the record that we end up submitting to the legislature. Commissioner Haywood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to comment too about, about computers' ability to, you know, to do these maps. We had a visiting professor from Stanford come and just oversee what we were doing. Just give us his take on legal aspects of what we were doing. His name is Professor Nathan Persley. Like I said, he's from Stanford Glass School. So he was just giving us his take on things. And one thing he did say is he said, oh yeah, there are all sorts of programs that could take a map of a state and taking the numbers that we're required to have and just instantly pop out the number of districts we need, the number of, you know, the population we need, and computers can do that. And what we've been doing is working with a computer program, but we do have that human touch to it. And that's why these meetings are so important for us to find out what your criteria is. What, you know, makes sense for you, what makes sense for your community. So while all of us are working on these maps hours a day, we have all of these criteria going through our minds. And also the feedback that we're hearing, the input that we're getting from you. So, so as we're looking at those maps and we're saying, okay, we need this number to go into this house district. Well, wait, we can't split up this community right here. We had a GIS volunteer helping us the other day. And, and he was saying, well, that's a community council right there. That's a community of interest you might want to consider keeping whole. So I love this process actually that we're in, and I look forward to all of the public meetings. We're having these public hearings so that we can hear from you. So while we are drawing those maps, while we're using these computer tools, we're able to take this element that you're sharing with us today and help form these districts for submission. So anyway, just a comment.
Thank you very much. We'd like to turn a few minutes over to our executive director, Gordon Hake.
So we love to hear here. We just were in Monticello. And so one of the things we want to do is, oh, I have to be over here so that they can hear me. Oh, and take my mask off so they can hear me. We're having bigger crowds, so what we want to do is limit the comments to five minutes. So we're going to go ahead and just kind of help times you and keep everybody moving. After the public hearing, we're still going to stick around. So you can still talk to us and help us get things, but we want to make sure that we get everybody's comments. And if you hear something that somebody else said, you can let them know that was great, but that, in terms of coming up and talking up. So we can try to make sure everybody has a chance to hear and say things that they need to say. And again, you have your comment sheets, you can turn it to one of the staff and we'll make sure those get demonstrated.
Thank you very much. So at this point, we would like to open it up to public comment.
Stand here when you do your public comment. This is where, pick it up for the.
For the microphone. And so we don't have a prescribed order. We didn't ask people to sign up. This is part of our learning experience as well. But we invite you to come up in an orderly fashion and share your thoughts with us. And when you do, please state your name and where you're from to give us some context.
Thank you for holding this hearing. This is a great opportunity for us to do some insight on where we think you should be going. My name is Ed Rutan. My wife and I have been residents of Summit County since two thousand and two. We live in the area of eight four zero nine eight, unincorporated, for Summit County. So we consider ourselves in terms of our immediate community to be what Mayor Beerman referred to as greater Park City. But I use the word immediate because that's not the only community that I think we're a part of. We are a part of the Summit community, Summit County community, have been for twenty years. And I'd like to give you one example of why I feel we are a community when it comes to Summit County. My wife and I were co-founders along with five other people of a mental health advocacy group called Connect Summit County. We didn't want to call it Connect Park City because mental health was a problem that we had to deal with throughout the county. So that's why we called it Connect Summit County. When we had mental health awareness month events, we had them in Camars, we had them in Colville as well as in Park City. The group that was later formed, the Summit County Mental Wellness Alliance against Summit County, not Park City. Has active participation from both the north and south Summit School Districts. So certainly on the issue of mental health, we are a community county. And that's an issue that is very important to my wife and myself. The Summit County Health Department obviously is a key player because health is a county function, not under Utah state government. But I'd like to say more broadly, that it's not just mental health where we need to be thinking of Summit County as a unitary community. I gave that as a very specific example. You're going to be drawing districts of the legislature, so we're drawing districts, not for the last ten years, but for the next ten years. And here I differ a little bit with a council member, right, by the greatest respect. If you look at what we will refer to as eastern Summit County, things are changing there very rapidly. So that I think over the next ten years, their interests are going to become much more closely aligned with western Summit County than people tend to think they are today. A couple of quick examples. Colville now has a mega development, just like Promontory, just like Glenwa. So that their interests in terms of economic development, even in Colville, are starting to get to be very similar to what over on our side of Summit County is like. If you also look at the population growth in Camars, they're having the same kinds of housing problems that we're having on the other side. Transportation problems go down the list. Over the next ten years, the overall interests and the overall problems that are going to have to be faced are going to be more and more alike in both eastern and western Summit County. So I certainly agree that there's been an historical difference, but I think that historical difference is going to be going away. Now, getting back to the current situation, the chair mentioned that you'd like to keep counties and municipalities whole. Well, that obviously didn't happen with Summit County. We have three different districts in the house right now. I happen to live in the district that got thrown in with Morgan County. We have zero in common with Morgan County. It doesn't make sense for us to have been with it. If you look at the numbers, you've got almost the exact number population-wise in Summit County that you need for a house district, well within the two thousand deviation that you were talking about. I'd like to add just a little bit. I was in the kind of.
You got thirty-five.
Okay, well, I was the city attorney of Salt Lake City for ten years, five years under Mayor Anderson, five years under Mayor Patrick. And I'll tell you, that is, and I don't live in Salt Lake City now, never did, always in Summit County. So I'm not speaking for Salt Lake City. But as an official for Salt Lake City, it burns me that we did not have the representation in Congress that Salt Lake City deserved. And I think whatever you do with the congressional districts, you need to make sure that Salt Lake City gets a fair voice in Congress. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Bailey. I am the executive director for the Utah Education Association. Thank you for your time that you're dedicating to this public hearing and in drawing the voting maps. I'm here today to bring attention to the Utah State Board of Education voting districts because they don't receive as much attention as congressional and legislative districts. As a twenty-eight-year Utah educator, I know that fair representation on the state board of education is important for our educators and our students. State Board of Education districts are large and in some cases have not kept communities of interest together. It is important that areas of similar interests be based with other areas of similar interests. Rural districts have very different needs from suburban school districts. I believe local school districts should not be split between states' board of education voting districts. Even suburban school districts have different needs from one another. I encourage you to ensure that local school districts are not divided in their representation on the state board of education. Our students and our communities need to be thoroughly represented by those making decisions that impact education at the local level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Margaret Olson and I'm the elected Summit County attorney. I've lived in Summit Park for over twenty-seven years. And currently, I'm in a house district that I'm sure with my longtime law partner in federal heights. And so I'm not even in the same house district as my neighbors over in Heineberg. And it's been, I feel that it's been a disservice to Summit County to be carved up into a total of five senate and house districts over time. And I've come to appreciate that now more than ever that I'm serving in an elected office. And I would like to echo the thoughtful comments made by. And I would like to echo the thoughtful comments made by my colleague, Mr. Rutan and my colleague, uh, Mr. Wright. Um, there are many, many considerations that go into this, but if Summit County could have a house district or a senate district, as has been suggested, I think that would, uh, really be a boon for our community as we do have, um, always important issues that we're trying to deal with at the legislature. Um, and so anyway, I, without repeating, will echo the comments made by, um, Mr. Rutan and Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm Katie Ellen Teebler. I live in Heinebrook, which is the neighboring neighborhood to Margaret. I am in a different house district than Margaret is in. Um, if you look at the map behind you, those, uh, the pink and the blue lines right there is a neighborhood. So I'm going to speak on a very granular level. Uh, my neighbor across the street is in a different house district. My neighbor down the street is in a different senate district. We are a very distinct neighborhood. We had to evacuate during the recent Carlys Park fire. We have very similar interests. We share a neighborhood park, a neighborhood school district, a neighborhood trails. Yet we're in two different state house districts and two different state senate districts. So I would urge you to take a look, especially at that neighborhood. And I have submitted a map of what that neighborhood looks like. It does have some very distinct boundaries and we deserve to be all in one district. Um, that said, I think we also deserve to be in the same house district as Greater Park City, as has been mentioned by Mayor Beerman, Councilmember Wright, several people who have already spoken. We are Greater Park City. We identify with that community. I think that the Park City School District makes sense as the boundary of that community. Um, there are, as been mentioned a couple of times, some other districts outside of that that may be part of that. But certainly Park City School District should be in the same state house district.
Thank you.
Hey, my name is Chris Campbell. I'm also from the unincorporated Summit County area. So I'm going to focus on that local area, but I think some of the lessons that can be applied statewide. So, uh, in particular, you know, we talk a lot about the house and the senate districts. And you could be in the same house district, but a different senate district as your neighbor in places in Park City. So one of the things I would encourage you to consider as you're looking at the statewide maps is, I know that the numbers don't meet evenly the bites. There's going to be some spots where they break up, but try not to make those places of the house district at first and the senate district in the neighborhood boundary. So I've got an example of what Summit County looks like in all our different combinations. The colors are the house districts and the textures are the senate districts. When you have all these different combinations, this area here, this is the Greater Park City area. And look how much variability there is in house and senate district, just in that little area. Right? This little brown area is that part that's down in Salt Lake, right? And we have enough to be in one house district, so that doesn't break our sense. And I want to illustrate another thing to consider from the school district standpoint. People have talked about paying attention on high school catchments and, um, school districts at the state level. Um, I think as you go around, here's our, uh, elementary school boundaries in the Park City School District. Jeremy Ranch is in two different house districts, just that elementary school. Chairliffe Side is in two different house districts. Carlys Park is in two different house districts. I can't remember about the poll. So one thing to consider, right? You could consider, uh, elementary school catching as a community interest, you know, at the statewide level. If the high school catching is too big, what you need, consider at least, if you're breaking elementary schools up, you're really messing with things that were created that might be too small. So I don't know if that's a layer that you guys can add. Um, the other thing that I say is legislature has requested that people submit maps of the entire state. And I don't know very much about the rest of the state. But if you guys could put your, um, community interest maps and everybody submit it online in a way that we could see it. And as we're trying to draw district maps across the state, we can at least see what those communities and interest maps are. So we can have a halfway chance of, uh, of representing those, those communities as far away. Um, and it would be helpful to be able to share those communities and interests with the audience. And I know they have said they're not interested in taking the consideration, but I want to ask them why, you know, if they choose to separate, uh, a community that I'm interested in. So we hope to have those maps available online with all the different overlays, um, so that we can see it. Yeah, well, I have some more things I can say. Almost, I really appreciate what you guys have to say. I feel like this process is what collaborative, like civil government looks like. And this is how we get civil participation because we're here, we're listening to people, we're taking this on the needs, we're working together to find a way that everybody's fairly represented. And to me, like, this is the best way I can look at it. So thank you all for your time and effort in, in that process.
Thank you.
Wanted to say something there.
Yeah, Chris. Yeah, yeah, you were, you were speaking about communities of interest. And we are, um, uh, well underway in collecting the communities of interest that are being submitted by the public, putting them into a single, uh, GIS layer, which is, we're hoping this week, I think, we can have open, so, uh, open to the public. So you can go online, look at the maps and bring in the, the various communities that is being submitted by all of you folks.
As we,
As a, as a stacked series of layers, and you can see where the, the areas of concentration, areas of concentration, where more people are concerned about a, a community and it, as it disperses going outwards from there. So, uh, we were hoping to have that up, I'm hoping, this week. Um, but we, we are in process of collecting the initial set of, uh, communities.
If people continue to submit communities of interest, will that layer continue to be?
It will continue to grow as, as time goes forward, yes.
Yeah.
And, and this is a terrific opportunity for me to point out how terrific my colleagues are. Uh, one of the things that really helps add flavor to our commission is Jeff is a GIS expert out of Davis County. And so he helps us think about some of those kinds of things and helps us see the possibilities. And so we appreciate the expertise that each member of the commission brings. Uh, but Jeff brings a technical expertise that really adds value. So thank you, Jeff. Other public comments?
I'm Danny Hubel. I'm from Heber City. I was born here. I have family that lives in Summit County, um, over towards Jeremy Ranch and also Summit, with its Olympic Junction. My time between here and Park City is, has been considerable. And when I work in Park City and I live in Heber's, a lot of the time that I spend and energy that I have, it's in both places. A lot of my family is either in Park City or in, in Heber City. And you see a lot of the same things in both areas. The task that you guys have is probably pretty difficult. But nonetheless, you'll probably come up with an answer. And it may not be right or wrong. It's the results we come up with. Um, I don't believe that there will be a right or wrong answer. I see a lot of people here that have got advanced degrees. But I don't see a lot of people from Heber. Heber's right now in the middle of putting on some pretty big local events. So I I know that our leaders and stuff like that are probably really working hard, taking care of us. And I haven't seen them here today. It doesn't mean that they're not trying to take care of us. But they're busy today. They're, they're doing their jobs. I also have a lot of friends and family in, in Bouchenee and down Price, in Grand County. So I understand trying to manage the balance between the different lifestyles and different ways people want their communities to look, but at the same time, keeping a balance is going to make everybody happy, so. Thank you for what you do. I, I, I'm going to share some of this information with the people that I talk to and I know.
Please.
And, and I'll encourage them to go in and try to participate in this process as much as they can to give us a more inclusive picture of the issues we're dealing with. Um, the gentleman came up talking about the communities and dividing them up. I think he did really well. And that, that type of idea and sharing those informations is, is crucial for this. And thank you for all you guys do from a layperson's perspective. I'm hopeful for some good outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If there's any other comments that are out there, one of the things I would like you to address to us that is important to us, you have made a great, a great pitch as to why Park City area should be, uh, should be combined for the state house. The issue though along that is, um, though Summit County has close to enough for a state house district, Wasatch does not. It's got to be combined with something. The two counties together have got to be combined with another because you're not coming up with enough for a state senate. Same thing on the state school board. You got to come up to two hundred thousand people. So one of the things I'd like you to talk to us about is with whom would you like to be combined? Because you're not going to be able, I mean, you just don't have enough bodies to stay there alone. So where would you like to go? So is it, and, and you started that, Jim, that's right. Going up to Morgan, out in the basin. I don't know whether that was actually, go over to Utah County. Where would you like to be? With whom would you like? If anyone else would like to go with that, that would be extremely helpful.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Terry Goodall. I live in Wasatch County, in the town of Interlock, which is very small. So, to your point, oh, my name's, to your point, this is difficult. I've looked at the maps. I've tried to place together. My concern is that we need economic districts together. And communities of interest tend to be along economic lines. Our school districts tend to be, um, the populations come from those economic districts. And I don't have a good answer for that. One of the things that I have a question about is what do we do about the tremendous growth we have planned, especially north of Heber, all the way up to the Summit County line? Because I know you have to take the twenty-twenty census numbers and deal with it. But can you at least consider, um, when you're making these districts, that you leave areas that have already planned growth in districts that will eventually lead to more population? I don't know if that makes sense. You know, the Heberianics area, because we do have tremendous growth planned along New Jordanale, south of New Jordanale. So, thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Well, thank you. In, 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 in response to that, one of the ways that we can pay attention to that is by you telling us. Because we won't inherently know that, uh, just by looking at the map.
So thousands of houses.
Yeah. It's a brilliant, it's a brilliant and good point. And we know that the numbers we have today are inaccurate because these were the numbers in, uh, what, April of twenty-twenty. Changed and they will change. So you can have kind of a, a view to that. But the problem we have is we still have to use the twenty-twenty numbers. So even though you know growth is going to be in there legally, we can't use that to justify a variance. Uh, and if it's not, it's sad, but that's reality of it. You do raise a good point that when you're looking at numbers, looking to the future, because the numbers are going to change in ten years anyway, is an art form that can't be statistically done, but our numbers still have to be statistically similar.
That's why they do it every ten years. If they have a sometime period, you have to go back and do it. If you didn't, then we get rid of that.
So communities of interest, we should,
Communities of interest are, are a way of saying, that's right.
Our area is growing.
Yes, and, and then when you draw that community of interest, tell us why. And you just did. This is going to be an economic unit together and this ought to be kept together. That explains to us why you have that community of interest. So then we know that when we at least are trying to, to draw the lines. So the, the lines are important, but even more important is why did you draw that line? So that we understand the basis for it.
And it can be different. For example, I was talking for someone in Rich County. They did not want to be in Cache County because Cache County is no longer the agricultural area it once was. They want to be with Summit County, East and Morgan because they're more agricultural. But you're telling me East Summit is changing rapidly. I, that's the, you know, so you may have your community of interest, but there may be your neighbor who has a totally different community of interest that changes it there. And that's, it's a subjective thing. That's, that's why the numbers become kind of important because that's objective. We can count eight hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and four people. Boom. We can do that. But community of interest, that my rancher from Rich County would say, no, no, we ought to be, our community of interest should bring us to Summit County and Morgan. And you may say, no, 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 we're changing, we're becoming more. So that's, that becomes the real challenge.
Thank you. So other public comments?
Hi, I'm Bill Goodall. I happen to be related to the other Goodall you just talked about. And I'd like to reiterate a point that was made by the gentleman from Heber. Today is, um, Swiss Days. And I, I'm sure you know that and I'm sure you know what a big deal it is. I happen to, to have somewhat of a, a friendly relationship with Mayor from Deadway, as well as Mayor from Heber, as well as the mayor from Charleston and a few others. And really regret the fact that they cannot be here today. Because the question you're asking is, who does Wasatch County, what area does Wasatch County want to be associated with as we move forward? And it's a very legitimate, very important question. And I think each of those folks could give you input to that. So I would hope that you would reach out to them and specifically ask them that question. Thank you for that.
Thank you. And, and just to that point, we have been reaching out to mayors. Uh, and, uh, we, we had hoped that amongst all the other chaos that they might be able to sneak over, it doesn't look like that they're going to make it today. But, uh, it, one, one of the challenges that we have faced is, and, and we recognize that not only is it Labor Day weekend, but it's Swiss Days, uh, and, uh, and we really appreciate you coming out because we know that, you know, these are important, you know, community events that, uh, some of you are, you're taking time away from. And that we really appreciate it. And, uh, we will continue to, to, you know, to be willing, you know, to, to listen to the, your comments that, that people have. So if you have friends whose voices ought to be heard, encourage them as well to, to get on the website, explain who they are and why they think this area needs to be kept with these areas. So today's not the only opportunity. We're going all the way up until the middle of October, hoping to get comments from people. So you could look at the maps as we develop them. You can look at them as we start to whittle them down and tell us, you know, none of those is very good, but we like this one better than those. So just because you give comments once doesn't preclude you from monitoring the process and giving us your feedback all the way through. Thank you. Any final public comments? Not hearing any, want to, oh, please.
Just to mention, the, the legislative committee is going to have a public hearing in Park City. I'm not sure the date, so,
October eighth.
October eighth, thank you. And so don't be afraid to tell them everything you told us. So, and, and still tell us everything you want to tell them. I'm just saying, there's going to be multiple, so there's going to be public hearings in Park City. And that's one of the reasons why we're listening.
Why aren't there two committees in? And now is that all coming together? And does the legislation have any commitment to you to accept media recommendations? And how many maps will you be?
Let me answer that question. The, the thing is, the Utah Constitution gives the power to reapportionment to the legislature. So by initiative, you can't change the constitution. So Better Boundaries Initiative did the best thing they could. They just simply said, we'll have an independent commission, give us guidelines, we'll do. And we are to give our maps to the legislature. The legislature has to affirmatively vote on it, yes or no, so you know why they're rejecting what we're saying. And that's why when Commissioner, uh, Facer says that it's important that we try to follow the same standards, I think that's very, very important for us. But, uh, we're, we're not enemies. I mean, I, in fact, I'm, I'm going to go to one in Logan and just listen to the public comment because I want to hear it. I'd probably go to others that I could if I worked into my schedule. But so, uh, we will give ours, we, we've got to get ours done by the first of November. The legislature has to act and has to pass one to have it effective before the first of November. to have it effective before the 1st of January because people running for political office have January 1st to begin collecting petitions. And they can't collect petitions if they don't know where the district lines are. So we're, and when we say about this, normally, we would have had our figures in April. We actually didn't get them until the 12th of August. And then we had to wait about 10 days until they had worked through to give it to we work them. In fact, Commissioner Thoron and I, maps that we've been working together, we had to come back this past Thursday and redo some because the census gave us new information. So it's just kind of a really compact type of a thing trying to do. So we're not enemies. I'll go to there. I don't see any legislators here. If they are here, to hear what we're doing, to say, but we will make a recommendation. And as Commissioner Thor said, we have to submit three for the House, three for the Senate, three for the school board, and three for Congress. And we'll do that and we'll defend those maps. And they have the option of saying, yes, we'll take it, no, we won't, or whatever. Interestingly, back 10 years ago, someone in Logan prepared a school board map, state school board map, and submitted to the legislative committee, and they adopted it. So when you complain about the state school board 10 years ago, it was not done by the legislative committee. It was done by a computer guy, an engineer up in Logan who put this thing together. It looks, I said, it looks pretty good. So they adopted it. And it's interesting because we had a lot of complaints from the state board about that back then 10 years ago. So like they say, no matter what you do, people say, oh, no, no, no.
So, but at least this time, this portion of it is transparent. You can see why it happened. So it's not just somebody behind closed doors. Everything we do from the map drawing to the meetings is open and streamed. You can listen to what we're talking about with each other. You can listen to that, and then you can make your voices heard to your legislators, who will have the final decision. And so if you like the maps that we support, the thing that you can do is share that perspective also with the legislature. Because as my colleagues have said, we want these maps to be representative of the people's interests. And you then are the ones who will help us carry that message to the legislature. But at the end of the day, as Commissioner Hilliard has said, they have the final decision. But we all get to hold them accountable for the decision-making process that they go through. And that requires that we all be engaged as public citizens.
Is it like a committee as open as this commission is?
Nobody is as open as we.
So. So we are striving to be very transparent in our work. And we hope that the Public Cease Act can appreciate that, so.
One comment was that I was asked from people I was telling about this meeting. A number of people asked if it would be on Zoom. There was not any link to anything there. I assume you'll put it on your YouTube?
So it is currently being streamed on our YouTube channel, and it will continue to be until YouTube dies available on our YouTube channel. So, all right, if there's no further. We had our first meeting by Zoom, and that was a disaster. So then we went to a different platform.
I don't remember what happened.
Well, I'm going to appreciate your forgetfulness. So with that, we'll close the public comment session. We have one more agenda item, and that's any further discussion from the commission that we'd like to direct towards the staff or any comments. Commissioner Baker?
Just an encouragement to all of you. There's been a lot of talk about communities of interest. And I think that's one of the very strongest ways that the public, you folks, can express your voice. Please go online. Please do a little mapping. Draw a boundary around the communities that you see, such as economic communities, such as watershed issues that that Mr. Wright spoke to you earlier. These are communities of interest. And if you input that information, we will get it, and we can factor that into our time. So please, go online, give it to staff here, do it at home, whatever. But we need that information to make the best future districts for you folks and for me, too.
And make sure you tell us why.
Yes.
That why is important. Any other comments, please?
Thank you. Well, there's, this has been a really great discussion, and thank you so much for your input. It is so helpful. Just one thing, you know, there's been a lot of talk about the specific numbers we're looking for and how we're going to have to shift some things around to be able to fit into those requirements of numbers. But I just want to say, don't be intimidated by that. So if you're thinking, oh, I don't know if I can get online to do this, you know, to do all the numbers and to try to figure everything out, at the very, very least, the information you're sharing with us as to why you seek, you have a community of interest and why it should be kept together. That means just as much as the other stuff that we're asking people to submit. So there are many, many ways to participate, many, many ways to engage. And please let your family and friends know, too, that we welcome the engagement of this. And I, and we've talked about the legislative committee. I think if we can really gain public support through this, we know that there is public support because the proposition passed in 2018. So we know there's that support. If we can just have great participation throughout the state as we hold these hearings and as we invite people to submit things online, I think that's an important message that we send to the legislature to let them know that these are the people's maps that are being submitted and for them to seriously consider adopting those maps. So anyway, thank you again for your participation. We, as a commission, all appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have anything else from the staff?
No, just, we have people back in front that can show you how with the software. So when you go home and if you get questions, you talk to your five-year-old, and I do. They'll be here for a few minutes and help you do that.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.